...system and to provide a briefing of upcoming considerations of support for several proposed quarters of commerce projects submitted. And then also, staff wanted me to mention that the new AV system briefly installed in this conference room is very sensitive and it picks up all conversations. So please be mindful during the meeting that anything you say will be picked up on the meeting recording tonight. And I'll turn it over to.
Actually, I'm gonna go straight to Kristen.
Okay.
Good evening, so council members and commissioners, thank you for your time tonight. We're going to, like Kusina was saying, talk about a new policy framework for regional projects that, you know, Richfield's surrounded by, so often a topic of conversation. And so what we're gonna do is let, well Lance, here from HKGI, and he'll start the presentation, then our city and regional powers will wrap it up, and then we have, hopefully, most of the time tonight will be discussion on the framework. And we did get some comments in advance, so we'll, we might likely start there. But really, we wanna hear from the commissioners today. This will be the opportunity for, for the Transportation Commission to understand what we're trying to do, give your input, so that the council can consider that when they draft and completes the policy. Hopefully, another work session in February, hopefully, we can get close to finalizing. And that's with the council, and so this is kind of the opportunity for the commission. And I think that's it. So I'll just turn it over to Joe.
Yeah, I'm gonna start us off real quick. Just a quick introduction, as Kristen said, I'm Joe Powers. So for Sharon, there are a couple of new commissioners. I am the city engineer, work with Kristen over in Public Works. And we wanted to come to you tonight, and really, as Kristen said, we're intending this to be mainly discussion. So we're gonna try to go pretty quick through this presentation. I'm gonna make the request that we hold questions and discussion until we get to our discussion topics, just to keep us on, on a topic here and keep moving. So the purpose of today's work session is to really bring forward a, what is very much a draft at this point, framework for assessing, evaluating, analyzing, supporting, prioritizing regional highway transportation projects. The reason we want to do this is because we want to have a method where regional projects that come forward to the city can be, can be analyzed really in a standardized way. We can look at them from a lot of different angles and really, really dig into how these projects are gonna impact our communities either positively or negatively, and use that to make decisions on a case-by-case basis, what types of projects we're going to support as a city and what types of projects we choose not to support. So, the first part of our presentation is actually going to be handled by Lance. Lance is a planner with HKGI. He has done an enormous amount of work with the city, both through our engineering division and through community development, so he knows Richfield very, very well. He also has the unique position of being involved on the regional scale with a lot of regional transportation policy and planning. So he's uniquely qualified to give kind of the background information as part of this, this framework that we're bringing forward. After that, we're gonna move into presenting the draft framework. Hopefully, you've all had a little bit of a chance to look through the PowerPoint, and so have a little bit of a concept of what we're getting into. And we'll stop after that point, have the majority of our discussion, and hopefully have time after that discussion to move into a couple of project-specific discussions for some upcoming quarters of commerce projects. One of them is on the crosstown, which is a project that our staff at Richfield is bringing forward to MINDOT. Two of them are on 494 and are a continuation of the upcoming project one for the 494 corridor, part of the entire vision that was approved by the local policymakers about a year and a half ago. So, we'll jump right into it, and I'll hand it off to Lance to kick us off.
Well, thank you. It's, it's good to see familiar faces and some new ones and some new commissioners on the Transportation Commission. So, we thought it'd be kind of fruitful to start off with just some kind of basic overview of kind of the regional system and a lot of the policy planning work that gets done at the regional level to help inform investments to the transportation system, and then we can really kind of get into the meat of, of the discussion here tonight. So, as we think about a lot of the regional transportation decisions that are being made across the region, we're, we're really looking at a lot of partners here in the city of Richfield. We're working with a lot of different agencies. We have a county, county roads through our community, we have state highways cutting through our community, and we've got the airport, you know, right next door, and we're working with a lot of other interested stakeholders in the transportation system, even from our adjacent neighbors of Minneapolis, Bloomington, Edina, and then just even the businesses in the community as well. So we're, we're always trying to work with multiple interests and always trying to find the right transportation solutions. As we think about transportation investments in the region and in the city itself, this is more about, this is about all modes of transportation. We're always thinking about regional investments for pedestrians, bicyclists, transit, freight vehicles, so kind of keeping that in perspective, that we're, we're thinking a lot about different modes throughout the region. And so, a lot of work is done at the regional level to really help guide those policy decisions and help guide the bigger regional investments, those big highway projects, those big regional investments to transit and regional trails. And so the Metropolitan Council, who serves as kind of that regional planning agency, helps establish a lot of those goals and visions for the region, and where they want to prioritize their investments on some of these bigger systems. And so they're really helping provide this through a lot of their policy documents and their big vision documents. The biggest one that kind of sets the framework for a lot of that is known as Thrive MSP, that has a whole host of policy plans, one being a transportation policy plan, that really is founded on about six different goals that help articulate the region's vision. So, we don't need to read through each of these, but you can see the goals here are quite comprehensive. They're, they're addressing multiple goals, from safety to access to quality life, health, you name it, you know, it's pretty, pretty comprehensive. And with those policy documents, they really help shape a lot of local decisions and a lot of other decisions that are being made by other agencies. And so, that TPP really helps influence and shape the local comprehensive plan, the city's 2040 comprehensive plan. It helps guide a lot of regional studies and plans, and also informs capital investments. So part of that bigger kind of discussion today is how do we start to utilize these policies and our own policies to guide future investments to the highway system, in particular for today's discussion as well. Kind of going back a little bit of what I said is, this is all founded on a lot of planning work. So there's a lot that's done at the regional level. You can see just a number of the state plans and regional plans that are done to help inform those decisions. And they really are trying to find that right balance of transportation needs across all modes and reflecting back on a lot of those goals. How do we make the right decisions that meet those goals and those aspirations for the region? And then how do we best kind of take that and apply it to our local system as well? And how do we influence those decisions so they benefit our community and they're meaningful investments to our area as well? Fair amount of more guiding stuff we don't need to walk through, but there are some very specific principles that they utilize that help articulate where investments should happen and how we start to prioritize those investments. What should we be looking at? How do we look at low-cost, high-benefit solutions before we explore projects in balancing those modes of transportation across the region? So, I think the message here is it's, it's pretty complex. There's a lot of things we're trying to solve and address throughout the region, and also trying to do that at the local level as well. So a lot of the guidance that's been established already and adopted as part of those regional plans are currently going through an update process now. They update this every 10 years that then kind of coincides with the next round of local comprehensive plans. So, Met Council's currently in that process of updating their transportation policy plan. There's gonna be some engagement events coming out here actually in February for locals to participate in, and many more opportunities over the course of the next year or two years to weigh in on what those regional priorities are, and how do we refine and change some of those goals that they've established as part of the 2040 TPP. So just also then kind of bringing this back to kind of a local perspective and the local guidance, similar to the region and state, a lot of planning work has been done here in Richfield from a transportation perspective. And certainly from my experience throughout the region, Richfield is certainly one of the most active communities when it comes to really thinking about planning and really having these conversations we are having today. So, you can see a, a lot of studies, a lot of plans have been done from a planning perspective that really cross all modes against, and a lot of emphasis on pets and bikes here locally as well. Within those plans, they were also used, a lot of that planning work was also used to help influence and shape the last comprehensive plan update. And so, so there are some very specific goals and transportation policies across multiple, multiple plans. I think the, kind of the cornerstones of planning that has done, that are kind of bigger comprehensive nature is certainly the comprehensive plan, but then the bicycle master plan and the pedestrian plan as well are some of the, kind of the big, basic plans that the community utilizes a fair amount. So just a snapshot of some of those goals and policies that the community uses to currently help guide some of those investments in the community. And then Transportation Commission certainly has its own guiding principles that you guys utilize and have used in the past to help guide those decisions as well. So, kind of a lot to take in, but just wanted to give that quick kind of primer, kind of overview of some of the past planning work and the regional, local guidance that's out there to help inform some of those decisions.
Great, thanks Lance. So, kind of building up to our discussion here, just a couple of thoughts to think about as we move through the next few slides here, some discussion items. These are just examples, so feel free to bring to the discussion whatever thoughts you have. We really wanna foster a lot of collaboration tonight as much as we can and get as many, as much feedback as possible so we can make this the best, best approach that we can come forward with. Just a, a little note kind of at the bottom here, one of the core focuses I think we wanna bring to this discussion is that staff really is emphasizing that we would like to have the flexibility in the future, in collaboration with the commission, with the council, with the rest of the city, to look at all of these different projects and really evaluate them on a case-by-case basis. We, we are hoping to avoid a policy that would be very strict in guiding what we can and can't do, and potentially lose out on some benefits that we might be able to see otherwise by, by remaining flexible with this. So, what we've developed is a framework approach to look at projects, and one of the next slides here we'll get into is a whole list of different categories that we think we can apply and assess a project on in a very, usually a very high level or preliminary basis that essentially will allow us to make some decisions on whether we support a project at that point or not going forward. All of these regional transportation projects typically have a few different steps to get approval, especially if you're working through big projects like the 494 project that's going on now. This is a step that we take very early on to establish whether, whether we support the project. There's additional steps such as municipal consent, which is a state statute identified approval from a city council for regional projects that affect a local municipality. So just keep in mind that those kind of steps are kind of later on in the, in the process when we look at a project. We, we put together a purpose statement, I won't read it here, but this again is a, is a draft, we're open to feedback on it, but we're trying to focus on a statement that describes what we're trying to do with this process. So the next step is we came up with a, an initial list of different areas where we can assess each project, and I'm just gonna actually gloss over this because it's all listed on the next one with a little more detail. So we have all of these different steps, and what our goal would be is, at the very early planning stage of a project, we could go step by step and really try to dig into each of these different topics. And some of them, I'll note that some of them say "local" specifically, but I think it's really important to think about this as viewing how each of these affects our city locally, because at the end of the day, we're really hoping to bring forward projects that support not only the region, but specifically our community. We don't wanna bring forward projects that are gonna be detrimental to our community. And so, we wanna think about each, each one of these areas and how they impact Richfield, and whether it's good or bad. Some things to note is, this really is intended to help guide these decisions. It's not supposed to be completely black or white. It's not supposed to be check yes or no on each one and make a decision based on that. It's, it's to give us more information and give us the tools to have a really good conversation about these projects as we move them forward. Another note is, there's probably never gonna be a project in the future that 100% satisfies every single one of these goals. As much as we would all like it, it'd be great if there was, there's probably not. Every project is probably going to have some drawbacks. I think it's important to acknowledge that right off the bat. We did try to tie in, and you'll see in next, one of the other slides when we discuss our projects, one of our projects specifically, one of the things we try to tie in when we're doing these assessments is looking at some of this guidance that Lance has talked about, both on a regional, but especially on a local scale, and using those more concrete policies and guidance documents to really inform how we investigate these projects. So for instance, if we're looking at a project that's reconstructing a pedestrian bridge over a highway, we're gonna look at that and compare it to our pedestrian master plan. Does it provide better connection for our residents, for neighboring communities? Does it increase mobility in and across the city? So really focusing in on those established guidelines and policies that we have locally. And then, the last thing is a few recommendations and kind of focusing where staff wants to go with this framework. And again, reminder that we're open to feedback on this, we wanna foster this discussion. So, what we're looking for on this framework and what we ultimately want to accomplish is give ourselves a process that lets us evaluate projects on a case-by-case basis. Focusing especially on how they align with our goals and policies. We want to be able to continue to partner, coordinate, and collaborate with local and state agencies. So, one thing that we, there's a lot of value in maintaining good relationships with other agencies, with our neighbors around the city that Lance mentioned, Bloomington, Minneapolis, Sedina, and further out. We really do wanna have a process that complements our ability to continue to partner with, with other local agencies. We want, still want to be able to leverage outside funding. As maybe, a lot of you have probably heard, there is a lot of federal funding coming down the pipeline over the next three, four, or five years. Our staff has been looking into this very closely. We have a, a number of projects that we're gonna be bringing forward or funding opportunities that we're trying to get for our community, but also for regional opportunities. So we do hope that this framework is something that allows us to really prepare better for going out and seeking those funding opportunities. If, if we can have a really well-thought-out process that we can lean on and bring into grant applications, that's gonna go a long ways for us in, in getting this money to move infrastructure projects forward. And then lastly, and I mentioned this before, we hope to put our city in a position to have a voice in these regional projects, especially ones that we're not necessarily leading. And so we, we want to have a seat at the table, we want to be able to influence them. What we're hoping to avoid is a, a policy that kind of shoehorns us into one decision or another on any particular project, and by doing that, takes us away from the conversation and removes our ability to influence where these projects go. So, I'm actually gonna pause it right here, and I'm gonna open it up for discussion, and I want to acknowledge that we had a couple of comments that came in from our council members ahead of the meeting. So Sean had a few, so I'd like to offer, Sean, if you'd like to kick the discussion off, we welcome that.
Sure. So first, because I wanna acknowledge that the perspective I have might not be the one that all of you are coming with to this, but just like, big picture, I do think we've kind of reached peak freeway for Richfield, that the benefits of additional capacity, additional room for more cars is minimal. The example is like, if you have, if you have a cornfield in the middle of nowhere and you build a highway to it, that cornfield got a lot more valuable. You could have a truck stop there, you could build development, it's a game changer. You take that, you know, two-lane highway and make it a four-lane highway, there's a little more benefit, but there's not that much. If you make it a six-lane highway, there's even less benefit. And Richfield is ringed by four and six and eight-lane highways. And so my basic perspective is that we're not gonna get much more by adding more, but we're gonna continue to lose land, we're gonna continue to get more cars on the road and more greenhouse gas emissions. So I would say, a couple of concerns that has come to with this, one is that the criteria that we're given, and there's specifics here, are just, it could be used to support almost any project. And they gave an example of the Cedar, and I will say off the bat, the Cedar Portland crosstown project, it seems like a stronger project than the other two. And they gave an example of that. But it, it does seem like these are squishy enough that if you can kind of get to the conclusion you already went to get to, that it's a good project, or it's money into the community and it's worth doing. But I would say two specific areas that I really want clearer lines around. One is right-of-way impacts, because I think one of our biggest costs is losing really valuable land along our freeways towards whether it's embankments, or shoulders, or travel lanes, or holding ponds for water. That's a significant impact to a community that's fully built out and isn't getting any more land. The other one that really concerns me is the greenhouse gas emissions. I, I love that that's a goal, I love that that's named. I'm not sure how we're going to measure it, and specifically, the, the basic idea that when you add more capacity to the roadway, more people drive on it. And so you might get a benefit of potentially reducing some stop-and-go traffic, you're in reducing emissions, but I, I wanna know as a policymaker, is the benefit of that going to exceed the additional cars that are ultimately going to come on that? And again, just to compare the, the two areas we're talking about, I am more concerned about that on 494, which could be developed kind of into infinity, in terms of what could go along and what traffic it could attract, and a little bit less concerned on crosstown, where it is kind of fully developed and unlikely to change in its current form. So, those are my concerns, is wanting really clear boundaries on, we think losing more land is bad, and if we're going to say greenhouse gas reduction is important, how do we have confidence in that?
Here. Also, I have comments from Councilmember Ben Whelan, who's not as sick, and so he's unable to be here tonight, but because we have such limited time for you all to give us feedback, he gave me the option, so I'm just gonna pass it back to you.
Okay, thank you. Yes. I also wanted to note for the public record, there were some comments that a resident sent in, that it was emailed to the whole commission, and I apologize for being late. Is this the time that people are giving their comments on the frameworks?
Yes.
Yeah, we just, just kind of started getting into the overall conversation.
So we really do wanna have an open discussion, and staff will participate, but we don't want to be giving answers. We'd like you all to provide your contributions.
Okay, so pretend that was, I mean, I was saying to everyone, but pretend that was less directed at staff than it was. I'm curious what people's reaction is, particularly the idea that are, are we at peak freeway? Would we benefit and we would be a more thriving city if we continue to expand freeways? Or is the cost of that better or worse? I'm just kind of curious where people's starting point is on that.
That was one of the things I was thinking about, to what degree are we a good citizen in a metro area, and to what degree are we, we wanna make sure Richfield's right? And both of those matter, but it's almost like, how do you prioritize the two, you know? Because sometimes it will be a trade-off, maybe not even in free.
I think we're seeing that. Maybe we're past the tipping point for what's benefiting, excuse me, Richfield. With MINDOT's expansion of 494, they're actually discussing taking away exits, which were, you know, off-ramps to local businesses that may have thought that they'd have that access. But now, not the case. So there's these negative impacts as the corridor expands and becomes more of a connector past us. We're starting to see some of the mindset of, so that, to your point, I think that expansion maybe has reached a point, ways where it's, where the benefit can be even be negative as it expands more and more.
One thing I think that's missing here, I don't know how you do it, but is a sense of looking to the future. These all seem to be like, okay, this project today. You know, e-bikes, electric cars, you could see things that are just kind of niches on the side now, in 10 or 15 years, becoming a huge thing. Richfield's got, we have winter, we have ice, ugly conditions to be riding a bike. There's nothing here that says to me, we're gonna look out over the horizon and say, you know what, maybe this project isn't right now, it seems to be a little fuzzy now, but you know what, in five years, you know, the number of people that are riding their bikes, or the number of people that are using electric cars that need charging places, or something like that, seems to be missing here, where there's any kind of sense of what's on the horizon. You know, the whole idea of exactly what, what you're saying about, you know, four lanes, six lanes, eight lanes, 10 lanes, everything I've ever read says that when you add the lanes, it ultimately doesn't solve the problem, because more people just drive in, and the traffic jam gets 10 lanes wide instead of four lanes wide. So, yeah, I just hoping for a sense of future.
So, I was glad to see that we're considering safety and mobility, because I think those are huge things that are coming up. But I also, the last year or so, I've been working on the 494 corridor commission, where we're meeting with all the neighboring communities, and that really drove home the importance of number five, that we wanna be working together with our neighbors so we have a voice in the projects. So like, this phrase, one of the 494, Edina and Bloomington backed us up when we said we need to have a pedestrian bridge across Chicago Avenue, at Chicago Avenue, we need that pedestrian bridge. And so they said, yeah, we need to do some of that and make sure we take care of connected communities, so they backed Richfield on that. So I wanna make sure that we're also listening to them, so like, if they need help on 82nd Avenue, or someplace where it's a question of safety or mobility or something, that we can work together. And I'm, I haven't specifically spoken with Minneapolis, but I'm thinking the crosstown and some of those intersections there, it's good to have that regional voice. So when it talks about having a voice, I wanna make sure we have a flexible framework so we can have that give and take and that negotiation with our neighbors so that we can, because we're tiny. If we start looking at, everybody around us is much bigger than we are, so we need to kind of work together so that our voice is heard too. And they've backed us up in the past, and I don't wanna lose our, our voice. So I think it's important to can think about that, to keep it flexible so we can also think about this, the whole region together. So I don't know, others have things to comment on?
I like these, these ideas. One of the things that I see missing, exactly two, I'll kind of play on Sean's comment about air quality. I know you said greenhouse gases, my concern is not necessarily greenhouse gases, but air quality for our citizens. To be honest, it's more important to me that we keep the 62 corridor healthy for people who live within a block than some of the global items. Also, what you didn't see here is, it's almost old-school, and I'm not gonna put it this, yes, I didn't mean to say it, increases the value, increases property values in Richfield. So what I mean there is that it benefits the citizens of Richfield. You don't have it in there that, I presume it's implicit, but it should be explicit, that its impact could be beneficial to the citizens, to all citizens of Richfield. And a balanced approach. And I say balanced, because I don't wanna have one section of the city benefit at the expense of the other, or us lose the idea that we are a community of one and we need to look at everybody's concerns.
Add to that too, the idea of aesthetic, meaning you want a beautiful city. So, we don't want, you know, 12 lanes, you know, next to neighborhoods and things in this state, where we can avoid, I think that's just a value too, is how does it beautify the city and make it a more pleasant place to live?
Yeah, I, I'll just echo other comments. I think the framework approach, the, the five bullet points are all stated in terms of, you know, goals that we should be having, especially to the mayor's point about remaining a flexible planning partner too, because we are so small and we don't have the luxury of, of trying to go it alone when it comes to making a lot of these decisions and things like that. And it all is so spongy, right? It's really tough to tangibly evaluate a lot of these things. And to Sean's point, I think one of those things is right-of-way, you know, how do we, something explicit that we can look at and say, what are these impacts to existing Richfield land, homeowners, businesses, that sort of thing? And then I, I think the rest of it comes down, you know, things like safety and mobility as well, those are things, if you think of safety and mobility, that probably is gonna as well, those are things, if you think of safety and mobility, that probably is gonna involve our residents here in Richfield, which isn't always the case when we're thinking of 35 and 494, because these are huge corridors. You know, most of this traffic is not our traffic. So I think if we can have the lens, you know, look at, you know, what might impact a Richfield person most, that's the approach to take. And then we, you know, consider things like how much commercial traffic is, you know, traveling on 494 and 35W. Because I just don't think that we have the tools realistically to evaluate everything without, you know, just sort of guessing what its impacts are gonna be.
And I think I would agree with the comments that's been stated today, and then also knowing that Richfield has approved several different developments around, whether it's, you know, near Cedar, or it's near 66th Street and other areas, and we're still able to fit that traffic that's coming with those new complexes that have been built. And it doesn't seem like we're swelling and needing more kind of like roadways in order for people to go through. And definitely with the framework in mentioning promotes multimodal transportation options, and then also reducing inequities, kind of what Jim mentioned, is making sure that the transportation projects benefit all of Richfield residents. And so taking into consideration underrepresented populations, and ensuring that they're still able to be able to transport and be able to move around, whether it's bikes, walking lenses, or wheelchairs and other things. But yeah, I think that the framework, the steps, seem like the...
Can I ask a very directed question? I think we've, I think we've heard some good things about maybe what's missing here, and what we need to add. Are there any comments on things that we do have here, that people don't like being a part of the assessment?
I have one more to add.
Sure, sorry.
That's okay. So how this impacts works in Richfield? So for example, adding a lane onto 62, that's gonna make veterans a little bit less nice, right?
May I ask clarifying question? I'm a little confused. We have staff recommendations down below, and you have that up there. What, what do you need feedback on, Jerry? Are you asking, do you think some of these, once an approach? Help me understand the difference between approach, help me under...
Now, we're like, all fighting to answer that, so.
No one answered.
I'll start, because I'm not shy to speak. So maybe to back up a little bit of context, I think what kind of drove this framework was questions about, does the city have a specific policy in place on whether we support certain highway investments? And so we know that there's a couple big projects that are coming, or being considered, that want to submit for these grant applications for approved projects on 494 and Highway 62. So we started creating a framework, this kind of matrix, to help guide the decisions, because each project is so complex, and so different from one another. So how do we look at these various regional projects through this kind of lens? And we want, and so there's kind of this, the recommendation is trying to utilize some type of framework to give staff the flexibility to have the conversation and weigh the trade-offs, weigh the benefits. Is this something we want to support and not lock us into one blanketed policy statement that says, we are no longer going to support these type of projects? Because we feel each project has its own unique merits, its own challenges, and its own trade-offs, and we need to meet collectively and talk about those. And so as I belabor this, this framework is a little squishy. It's meant to help guide the discussion, because everything's gonna be different for various type of projects. So there's also a lot of kind of studies that do go behind some of these projects that get presented and put forward in front of communities. So there may be some more technical data that's out there to help really quantify the benefits from a safety, mobility, air quality standpoint. So we want to keep that door open to evaluate all of that stuff and all that work that is gonna be, hopefully, happening as these projects progress and get more kind of relevant or serious for consideration.
I'll just add, what can help clarify, on the next slide that says, staff recommendations. Maybe what this should have said is, why staff is recommending this framework approach? So that we can meet these goals, where we want to have the flexibility to do these analyses. Does that help clarify it a little bit? And so really, we are looking for feedback on, both on the framework, and whether the commission and council agree with staff that these are goals for the city.
Just for clarification, on the previous slide? Sort of implied, or at least I'm reading it, is, it was a list of factors, that the highest priorities, first on the list, or is this a random list?
So our intent, and I'll be honest, we originally had these numbered, and we removed all the numbers, because we don't want to imply a priority. I think it's, it's all part of the discussion. I think on any given project, as we work through this process, there can be something that comes up, which may rise to the very top of the list, just because of how significant it is.
That's a good discussion item, too, if it needs to be ranked, maybe as a preference.
I would strongly suggest that if we bring this to more people for more input, alphabetically, therefore people just realize it's alphabetical.
We actually almost did that.
I could kind of tell by the reaction, I would say it in the obvious. Can I ask a question to Sean?
Sure.
So as you look at these, I think it kind of covers, I guess I ask both our council members, is there anything you need help on, or would you disagree with these, or want more discussion on from learnings or impact, or input from transit group?
Well, I think, a question for me would be like, again, how do we, first off, I want to clarify a terminology thing, because I think the word "mobility" has been used a few different times, a few different ways in this discussion. I believe when an engineer says "mobility," no offense to the engineers in the room, they mean more cars moving faster and more smoothly. And I think some people are maybe using it to mean like accessibility, like wheelchair accessibility, or different meanings. Does it generally mean traffic moving more smoothly when we say "mobility"?
In this context, "mobility" is being used in the context of moving, you know, moving vehicles.
Okay, so just to clarify that. So the one I'm sort of hung up on is, is how do we, is it important that local safety benefits and local congestion mobility improvements are both listed? That being like, it seems like, you know, an example being, I know we have this problem of cars avoiding Crosstown, Cedar area, so they'll cut down Portland and 66th. Is the problem statement there just that there is potentially congestion, or is the problem there really related to safety? And so is it important to even list local congestion as one of the... By the way, I do want to say, just to be clear, I do actually really like Jim's suggestion of having local air quality greenhouse gases as separate items. I think it's important to consider greenhouse gases, but I think they're different questions. And in fact, that comes up in the example from Peter, because the only example response that only addresses local air quality, doesn't address greenhouse gases, so they clearly individual concerns.
And just on that note, MINDOT is looking at all the corridor commerce projects that were submitted, including the three that are in this presentation, for their greenhouse gas impacts, good or bad. So that, we thought, we were hoping we'd have those results by this meeting, because it sounded like they were only a week out when we met with them, but hopefully by the 14th, what happened, as expected. But anyway, so they are looking at that, and that would be something that we would, I would anticipate, moving forward with these regional projects, that they'll have that information readily available, and we can talk about air quality with them.
Can we go to the next slide about the case-by-case?
Yeah.
The case-by-case makes sense, in that you have flexibility, and you're not forced into a decision. But at the same time, the case-by-case, again, doesn't necessarily not play into a future. You know, you could have a board makeup, a political makeup, business makeup, that's gonna push something one way or another, that a few years in the future, you may not have that same bias, or that same, we gotta do this, we gotta do this, and it's, you know, it's approved by power of personality, or just, things just go. And then all of a sudden, you've got this project here, and this project here, and this project here, and there's no connectedness. So I get the case-by-case, but I worry that if there's not an overlying objective on top of that, that's the filter that case-by-case goes through, then you could have things being swayed by influences that aren't necessarily on those lists.
If he wants to follow up on that, I was gonna circle back to Councilmember Owen.
I was just gonna say, fills a gap, or need, future, including future opportunities. You need to have, that's what you meant, a number one there?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. It's just more, I don't know if anybody agrees with me or not, but you can have, I've seen situations where there's been so much groundswell that this absolutely has to happen, unless do it, but there's been lots of fingers and things in behind it. And later on, it's like, it wasn't such a big deal, why do we have to do that? And so when you say case-by-case, it's like, you have an overwhelming decision being made that may not, that may work for that, but may not work for the whole.
I'll just...
That's why our staff makes recommendations, though, right? I mean, regardless of policymakers and that sort of thing, right? That's part of the process as well.
I think that's an element of it, yes. What I was gonna say is that, I think it's important to note, and it's not really illustrated here, but when we get into each of these analyses, we are going back to those standing plans and policies that we've developed over time, and we, and really with the intent to guide our long-term policy and growth for the city, right? So we're not looking at these, we're looking at each project on a case-by-case basis, but we're measuring them against consistent metrics as best we can. So I think that helps address that a little bit.
A simple example would be the 494 project, that's gonna be getting started later this
year. We looked at our bicycle master plan, and we thought, well, there's an opportunity here, what are we, what's in that plan that's along the highway, what can we get in there? And we'll get, we're getting a substantial amount of it, we have a couple gaps that are gonna be left out that will...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't want my comment to be, come across as adversarial.
No, I know.
Just like, just like, exactly like you're saying, it's just like, here's our goals, this short-term project, the long-term goals.
Exactly.
I appreciate it.
So I wanted to go back and clarify your question. Are you saying that safety and mobility are such a bedrock thing, it doesn't need to be in here? Because that's what I hear from residents about, like, if somebody lives on Portland Avenue, and there's a detour going on, and it takes them half an hour to back out of the driveway, because they're gonna have traffic, or that they are happy that they redoing that bridge by Bloomington, because it's so unsafe there to get onto the freeway? That's what I hear from people about. So I, can you clarify what you were asking?
I guess, in my thinking was, do we want to remove the congested mobility improvements item? Because if a project is good for Richfield, it should satisfy the local safety benefit test. And sort of mobility, mobility improvement alone should not be enough to like bump this up in our consideration higher. But I think, you actually said something that I hadn't considered, but you're right, the project wouldn't be coming forward, it wouldn't have meant the fill and gap are needed if it didn't have mobility improvement attached to it. There's other factors that would already be striving for it, so I guess I wouldn't want us to inflate our received support of a project because of it.
Because I think those are, based on the feedback I've heard from residents, they would want to have safety and mobility considered.
Yeah.
But I didn't know if you already figured that would just obviously always be considered.
Well, again, I do think safety benefits should be on that list. I think that is really important, specifically the like, getting more cars through faster part of mobility that I'm uncomfortable with naming on the list, because it is baked into every project, and I don't think it's necessarily something that should improve all of the things of it.
Can I just maybe offer some thoughts to that? I think that what this was intended for, because it's a regional project discussion, is that the relief is the key word for me, is the congestion relief on our local system that the regional system's placing. So if they're expanding for expansion reasons, or doing whatever it is, if it's not expansion, and it's not relieving anything, because the more cars that are on our system that don't necessarily want to be there, it's just more opportunity for, you know, conflicts in all modes. So that's kind of the thought, that's at least what I'm, that's what I read into it. It's like, well, how are we, what are you doing for us with this project?
My other just general comment, and I don't want to get us off the rails, I do wish just our, I'm not even sure this is something we would explicitly be affirming, or this is just staff statement, but the purpose statement, I would like to be like a little more contrite about acknowledging that like, Richfield has been a good partner for decades, has allowed a lot of freeways, and the benefits are diminishing, like nevertheless, we acknowledge that certain projects would provide benefit, and we're open to those. As opposed, because this is just like, more improvements are necessary and great, and I worry that that's a little bit too, all projects will be good for you.
This is all open, this, that was just a brainstorm sentence I forgot there.
I'm just taking a quick note, and then I'm gonna move on. Okay, so we have about fifteen minutes left in our joint session, so I wanted to move on to the next part of our presentation. Great discussion, thank you, everybody. I think we've got some really good feedback to keep moving this forward.
Do you have any final thoughts before we move on to the projects?
I mean, I think that you've got a good list here. I mean, just to kind of punchline, I think that's sort of what you're getting at. It's a thoroughly well-vetted list, I think, you know, some fine tuning perhaps, but you're awful close.
Thank you. And I'll add, any comments later on, over the next couple of weeks, please send them along our way, and we'll work to incorporate anything else that comes up. So the very quick background on this is, the corridors of commerce process is a funding opportunity that MINDOT presents. They've changed it up a little bit from what it's been in past years, but essentially, every local municipality and/or agency this year is allowed to submit one request for a corridor of commerce application. The way the project is structured, it does focus more on like regional transportation projects, typically on highways. There's three projects that are being proposed and considered by MINDOT right now, that could or will potentially affect Richfield if they're constructed. The first one is a project that we, the Richfield staff, have put together, and we're presenting. We have presented this to MINDOT, we have been talking to all of our partner agencies, local cities, we'll cover that, those conversations in a minute, and describe this project. The other two are, I didn't catch this, they both say Bloomington application. The second one is an application by the city of Bloomington. It is rebuilding the I-494 railroad bridge, it's actually a Pleasant Avenue, and the 82nd Street interchange at I-35W. So the railroad bridge is the portion of that project that would have an impact on Richfield, it's between Richfield and Bloomington. The second is actually an application by the 494 Corridor Commission. That is made up of local agency members. So our mayor sits on the 494 Commission as a voting member. I will note that, correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, I believe when this was approved at the last session, you abstained from that vote, because we knew this discussion was coming.
We didn't have a policy decision, so we abstained.
I think that's important to just note that. They submitted with abstention from the Richfield members, when they submit the application. So that, that application is for EZ Pass lanes on 494 between 35W and Highway 77, so basically the extent that Richfield and Bloomington share a border. Something to note is that both, all of these elements proposed on 494 are part of MINDOT's I-494 vision, which was developed over the last few years. The upcoming project is what they're considering, Project One of the vision. The vision's made up of four different projects. Project One is the only one that's been funded. Something important to note is that the Policy Advisory Committee for the 494 vision and the 494 project that Mary mentioned earlier, that's where the other cities came and really advocated for us at that commission for the pedestrian bridge and some other improvements. I want to note that the Policy Advisory Commission has formally approved the 494 vision that includes all of these elements. And a specific ask of MINDOT at that approval was that MINDOT worked to make sure all of these projects get funded, because the vision as a whole that was developed doesn't work with all of these projects. It sounds like I'm kind of being biased here, I'm trying not to be, I'm just trying to present the full picture.
Well, and just the full picture, too, is that this Project One that's gonna get started is, the funding that came in was corridors of commerce money, that's what triggered the project to move forward, so.
Yeah.
Same funding source. They're likely to do well, actually. They're likely to do well, actually.
So I'm just gonna gloss over this. This is just a very quick overview of kind of what the quarters of commerce program is, how MnDOT's, excuse me, scores each application. And then some notes, there's about $250 million available. There are forty-four projects that are currently being evaluated. So there was a first cut, where I think they took some of the projects off the list, that they saw is not viable, these three projects all made the list for MnDOT. And why we're having this discussion right now and over the next few weeks is because part of this scoring is the community consensus line, the second to last note there. Letters of support and council resolutions from any impacted community are required by MnDOT to get full scoring on these applications. So if our city were to decide not to support these projects, we would not be submitting a council resolution of support for one or all of them, depending on what the decision is. That would pretty significantly impact the scoring of any of these applications. It's gonna be very, very competitive. So I'd like to spend a lot of time on this, we only have a few minutes, so I'm not going to. This is the project that Richfield is proposing. There's kind of four big components of this project. One of them is adding an auxiliary lane on eastbound Highway 62, between Portland Avenue and southbound Highway 77. Yep, maybe Lance can kind of point it out. So what our intent as Richfield staff is, and we're doing the analyses, we haven't completed them, to determine how this impacts local traffic. But our hope here is not to just add capacity onto the highway, but to allow the highway traffic that currently reroutes through Richfield, specifically along Portland, along Highway 66 over to Highway, sorry, 66th Street to Highway 77. Allow that traffic that wants to be on the highway, get back on the highway. Improve the local mobility for our local community moving around, and not just by car, but people walking, people biking, make it safer by removing traffic that are, that's on our roads that really should be on the highway. The next big improvement is some changes to the interchange at Highway 77, Highway 62. The gist of this is essentially trying to eliminate some very short-distance weaving emerging movements on westbound Highway 62 with the two clover leaves. By doing that, or to do that, we would take westbound 62 to southbound Highway 77 traffic off of the ramp essentially, and put them into a controlled intersection, either a signal or roundabout. And thereby kind of open up the mobility on the freeway portion. The added benefit that we're really exploring here, that we don't show, is we are hoping that as this project progresses, if it does progress, is we could really get collaborative with Minneapolis and Hennepin County, and have some really impactful safety improvements for the area north of this interchange. I'm sure you're all well aware of the south end of Lake Nekomis intersection. It's, it does not operate well, it doesn't feel safe, it isn't safe.
The town won't be.
There, yeah, there was a fatality there about three weeks ago, and a hit and run.
It's the most dangerous in the city, isn't it?
I think so, yeah.
No, it didn't rise to their top of their list, but it has its issues. I mean, they, I mean, I feel like it's more dangerous than maybe the statistics would say.
I will say, we've had some conversations with Minneapolis, which is really great. We don't honestly get to collaborate with Minneapolis a lot. So they're interested in pursuing that portion of this project further. Lastly, very quickly, would be installation of noise walls on both sides of freeway, so it'd benefit both Richfield and Minneapolis residents living in these areas. And then a reconstruction of the 14th Avenue pedestrian bridge, which is not a great bridge right now. It's not ADA accessible, I don't think it's very highly used. Our ideal scenario would be to relocate it to 12th Avenue, which is a bike boulevard in Minneapolis. Formalize that bicycle connection between Minneapolis and Richfield. There are maybe some right-of-way impacts with that, but again, that falls under investigating this sort of framework. It comes up in that process. Again, I'm not gonna go through this real in detail, but this is kind of our first shot at providing like these really preliminary answers to this framework of like, where can we find places that these, this project supports these different goals? All, full transparency, I think something we didn't do here is really focus on areas where maybe we're not meeting these goals. And that needs to be part of the process moving forward and part of the analysis. And then lastly, for this project in particular, just summarizing, some agencies that support these projects. We separated out our project on the top. One thing to note is, Minneapolis, at this point, we've had a discussion since with them. They've told us that they cannot formally support our project at this time, so we are not going to be receiving a letter of support from them. The reason being, they have a policy in their transportation action plan that specifically says, in black and white, we will oppose highway expansion. And because of that policy, staff cannot go and make a, support any project that includes highway expansion. What they have told us is that they think there's some very good opportunities, and if we can spend some time in the future investigating this project more thoroughly, and really show some benefits, improve those intersection operations on their side up by Lake Nekomis, they feel very strongly that this is a project they could get behind from a staff and from an elected official standpoint, including the auxiliary lanes, if we can work through that, that technical modeling and make sure that it works. And then lastly, I'll just note that we're showing for the 494 projects that pretty much every other impacted agency or community has already noted that they'll be supporting these projects, and so Richfield is kind of standing as this final question mark. And so I wanna be transparent that we would have an impact by passing a resolution saying, or not passing a resolution supporting this project. And try not to be biased, but...
So I'm trying to understand, like, with municipal consent, can MnDOT go ahead, whether we give it or not? So it'll go forward with or without us?
Municipal consent needs to be triggered first, too. And so if there's a access change, right-of-way impacts, or what is the third one? There's three triggers. Oh, expansion. So MenPass would trigger it, that one would, for sure. I don't know that the railroad bridge would.
Maybe a quick note there is, with the letters of support and resolutions for these projects, if they don't obtain those, they will drop significantly down in the scoring criteria for quarters of commerce funding. So with this program, every point matters, 'cause it is super competitive. So even from MnDOT, it says, you know, if a project can't obtain these, they're probably gonna get knocked off the list.
So, case in point, since Minneapolis has this hard and fast rule, our project's probably gonna go, and there's no flexibility, and that's what we're trying to avoid, is to have some flexibility.
Yep, that's a great point.
Yeah, it was, it was an interesting conversation with them, because they, it's almost like they wanted to support it, they just couldn't. And they felt it was good. Mayor, also, if I could add on to that. So with the municipal consent, the agencies will try very, very hard to get cities municipal consent, but it is possible for them to proceed with the project without getting 100% municipal consent. And if you had a policy that was so rigid, that they knew that you were not gonna have, be able to provide municipal consent, then you lose that, that place at the table that you had talked about earlier.
So I did just wanna mention, I appreciate the need for not having a hard and fast rule, but if the conclusion of this were, we support all three of these projects 'cause we wanna see it at the table, we didn't create a flexible rule, we just created a longer way to say yes to highway expansion. And so I wanna be, I would feel just much better about this if we said something like, we support the crosstown expansion because it provides so many benefits to the community, we don't support widening 494. From my perspective, I hear you that it would harm the funding of the project if we opposed it. I think that would be a good thing for Richfield if we harmed the funding, 'cause I think the project would do net harm to Richfield. And I also just wanna point out specifically, when we look at the crosstown project, there's like all these benefits together, and even like the expansion part is like a third or a quarter of the actual cost of the project. A lot of that expense are things that we would want regardless, like the noise walls, the pedestrian bridge, that's all great. In the case of the 494 project, we already got all that stuff. Like, we got the noise walls we're gonna get, we got the new pad bridge, we got the interchange changes that are going to happen. It is a totally standalone project to also widen it and invite more cars. And it seems like that's much harder to support, or at least it is for me, because we've gotten all the good stuff that directly benefits Richfield, and now it's just a question of, we also want funding to widen the roadway and bring in more cars. So I do think those are just different, and I just wanna emphasize that for that point. One other thing I wanted to draw attention to, it looks like this would close the Richard Park by Bloomington Avenue exit, is that right?
So that's what we've proposed at this point. It's something that would be looked into with a lot more detail. Even in our kind of preliminary analysis, what's rising to the top is that a likely scenario would be closing the entrance ramp onto the freeway due to safety concerns, because the geometry is just, it's really tight angles there, very short merge distance. The off-ramp that goes to Bloomington Avenue doesn't really have a safety issue, so it would probably remain as a, as an important connection, especially for people in Minneapolis.
I just wanna mention, 'cause Commissioner Wallace pointed out the impact of closing Nicolet Avenue, and it would be kind of, especially if we could keep that exit, that seems important.
Could I just, kind of in response to Sean's comment with MenPass, and just kind of share why the Policy Advisory Committee did request that they continue with the vision? And one thing that was kind of a little bit of a heartache with the group was that they are moving forward with the MenPass lanes to the west, because the interchange doesn't operate as well if they don't have them. So they are doing them, which kind of moves traffic to the east of the interchange a little bit quicker, and actually degrades the current operations. So the Project One is actually a degradation of already what the traffic situation is on 4094 between 5 and Cedar Avenue right now. So it's gonna get worse. And so I think that was part of the reason why they were saying, are you gonna promise to do these MenPass lanes later? And I'm just throwing it out there.
Is it getting worse because the wider road will bring more cars to the narrow road?
Well, it's because they're doing the congestion relief to the, to the west, and so the congestion, so now this is gonna be the bottleneck that's in between.
Essentially moving the pinch point.
Yes, yeah, is basically what they're doing. So it's just, I mean, MnDOT was trying to say it's not measurable, really, but all the numbers were, we thought.
One other question I had, 'cause these are two separate ones. Is the purpose, does the railroad bridge have to be replaced anyway because of age, or is it just to facilitate the widening?
I believe it's primarily to facilitate the widening. I'm not sure if there's also an age issue, I don't think so, but there might be. That's not a great answer. Good question, not a great answer.
We can find out.
A quick question, you guys said earlier that we've already sort of given consent to this overall 494 vision, right? Which includes the multiple steps and phases, and that includes like these two projects listed here, because they are a wider part of that vision?
So the 494 Policy Advisory Committee has given that consent, of which we have sitting members. So currently, that's our mayor. And we're actually in a little bit of a transition period. Kristin's currently sitting on it, but it will be our new transportation engineer, Matt, who's sitting in the back, will be sitting on that going forward.
So we've sort of said yes to a version of this.
Essentially, yeah.
As a policy, yeah, it's a regional policy group.
I do think it's important, though, to clarify that our former mayor, Maria, was on the PAC, and our ultimate member, Troutman, was on the PAC. But we brought municipal consent back to a full council, and they voted on it, but we did not bring back to the council the vision. So our council has not voted on it specifically, but the representatives from the city did approve it on the PAC.
Just to be clear, like order of operation, so this vision was approved by this body in which we sit. This is a funding application to possibly support funding this project. If it were funded, it would come again for municipal consent for that specific project, if it triggers municipal consent, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
I just wanna be clear that like, and I appreciate that we wanna be a good player. Again, I think we have been a good player, I understand we don't wanna do the same thing Minneapolis is doing to our project. But I don't, I don't want us to get in a situation where we feel obligated to this, because we sort of support, or indirectly supported some things several years ago.
So the final couple of things here, some overview of the two 494 projects. I'm gonna skip over those, 'cause I think they're technically out of time. And I will head back to Chair if you'd like to have any more discussion, and just close, the steps are going to be refining this based on the feedback we hear tonight, any additional feedback you give us, and then coming back to an additional council work session in two weeks with a more refined framework. And then the final decision point that will be coming, council, if council determines that you'll be supporting the resolutions of these projects, I think we'll discuss that at our work session in two weeks. And then we would bring those to the council for, to pass those resolutions, if supported at the end of February. I'll just note that we'll be passing them the night before they're due to MnDOT, so we're gonna be like, right at the, right at the 11th hour.
So are there any other comments? And like you said, people can email you with comments and suggestions and things like that. During this portion of the...
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I think we're gonna take a really quick, like five-minute break, and then we'll reconvene the Transportation Commission meeting.
Sean, I can ask you something?
Thanks, I didn't, I'm really trying to be like, this is transparent as well.
Looks really thin.
I would ask.
But like, I wonder, is it...
That's what I thought.
No, this was, I'm not, said to get all of our, all of our...
Luckily, it's not gonna stick around, yeah.
No, and he's like, I just gotta do some crazy...
I just wanna say thank you for guys for plowing us.
Sound barriers.
And I just think I'm...
Right now, the bag.
The city does the streets, but it doesn't... 66 used to be somewhat like that. You redesigned it and you fixed it, and we redesigned. Exactly, whatever.
Okay, sure, yeah.
He's supposed to say, you're sliding. Our kids play baseball.
Yep.
It's like there's more session, but we should clarify that, we should probably...
Yeah, of course, you should.
Hey, it's the time of the year, I think Ben and Richmond, and all the gratitude.
That's right.